Hi, everybody, and welcome back to a Sunday Night Live. I have missed you, and from the comments for the last two weeks, I know that you missed me. And that makes me feel warm and gushy inside. Tonight is going to be epic. I'm gonna throw that word out there right now, and I truly believe in my heart of hearts. Tonight's gonna be epic. We have so much to discuss for the village. So I want to say welcome to Budget with Mama Bear and Andra, the Traveling and Savings Chief. Hi, ladies.
Hi. Am I frozen?
Hey, Donna. Hey, Steph.
Nope, everybody is good. Andra, can you see the comments or no?
Yeah, I just, I have them on my screen.
Would you like to do the honors of saying hello to everyone?
Absolutely. We have, I'm here. And I was just watching your video before when I was sitting in the coffee shop. Wendy's here. Lisa's here. I was texting with Lisa as well. We've got Gretchen, Robin Hawkins, my buddy from Detroit, and Nana Amy is here. Chrissy Jensen is here. Shell is here. Seashell save. And let me keep scrolling. You guys were just chatting it up.
I know. I love that. I love it.
They were just having a whole conversation. Misha's here. Jessie D is here. Amy said she's at work. And... Oh, Lisa, I love it. Okay, so Lisa's asking Misha if she had a monster today. So last night on Jeanette's Live, we were discussing things, and we're gonna be checking in on Misha with these monsters.
Okay. I have Fresca today.
You have a what today?
It's a Fresca. It's like sparkling soda water with grapefruit. It's really good.
I like Fresca.
That's vintage.
Yeah.
It's yummy.
So in Denver, I could find peach Fresca, and I really like the peach flavor.
Oh, I haven't tried that.
They don't have it everywhere. Hi, Jean. Jean is here and June. I see you, June. Emily's here with Leela.
Jen asked how we're feeling, Donna. You wanna start?
Um, two weeks. Two weeks, it kicked my butt. It literally, it downed me. I, um, there's a lot to talk about with that, and I want, I had a long conversation with Lisa. She persisted budgeting and savings yesterday, and I had a lot of time to think. Hence, why I have these two amazing women with me tonight. I could not move. I could not lift my head. I got up. I tried to sit up, but I was out for the count more than I was awake for over a week. And I, I thought a lot. I had, I had, I had deep thoughts, and it, it, the spectrum of those thoughts went from me being a child to me being the adult I am today, including you all. So, thank you for asking. I'm still not 100%, but I had to put on my big girl pants and say, "I'm done with it. I'm done." It has no place in my life right now, so kicking it to the curb. But Steph, how about you? You feeling better?
Yeah, it's getting better. I still feel the worst in the morning when I wake up, because mine's all in my head. And it's like, you know, when you've had a really bad cold, it takes forever to get everything out of you. So, um, gone through about 10 boxes of tissues. Um, yeah, I'm kinda over it. And now that I'm starting to feel better, I get to go back to work tomorrow. Yay.
You know what's funny is I wound up in the ER, um, not this Thanksgiving, but the Thursday before that. And, um, you know, they, they check you for RSV, uh, the flu and COVID, and I came back with the flu. And the first thing the doctor said to me was, "Do you need, do you need a note for work?" No, I don't, but my girlfriend does. So, I mean, laughing and joking and everything aside, but I will just tell you that this was the most painful of flus that I have had in my 58 years. Painful.
That's crazy.
I wish it upon nobody. Nobody. And I was telling Lisa, John did not, John would be like, "Yeah, since you had it, since you got diagnosed, I have it." I go, "Oh, heck, no." I was like, "'Cause you're not even down for the count, so don't even compare your, what you're feeling to what I'm feeling. You're just not allowed to let go get tested." But, um, he says to me, he goes, "You know what you have to do?" I go, "What's that?" He says, "You need to get up, get out of the house, and go give it to somebody else."
Wow.
I said, "It was only that easy."
That's funny.
But, yeah, he's funny.
The hubby, the hubby's been using that as an excuse to be in the shop more, because he's like, "I don't wanna get sick," you know? So, he's been in the shop the whole...
Oh, that's funny. It's funny, but it's not. Now that I've like met him, yeah, it's, that's funny. Sorry, Steph.
Now that you got, well, you've met both of them now. You've got, like, they just, they're comical.
Oh, I already, yeah, I already know Johnny D.
Can we just say, I, I have to give them both, like, I gotta give them both a standing ovation. Um, even, even June's husband, right? Um, those three guys, even, even Laura's Jonathan, they all melded. But, but, um, Greg and John, Steph's husband and my husband, they really, they, 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 the bond is there, and I know that they've been texting each other still, so...
Yeah, yeah. No, that was really cool to see. And I had a feeling that they were gonna be good friends after that. But you never know, you know? And so it was kinda neat to see that. And it was, I was laughing, because I'm like, "Yep, I knew it." But that's good, though. You want that, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, that's awesome. So Donna, thanks for highlighting people. I see you showed Judy and Danny, um, Nika. I see this, um, CNW, I'm not sure who that is, but hello. Hello to you. I see Kimberly, and I saw Kim, um, Little Sis Super Psycho. She's here. And hi, Jen. Okay, I see, I see where you're highlighting. Hey, Shar. Is he in? Cece's here.
Shar, I have to tell you, I just, I'm gonna butt in every time I see somebody that spocks something over the last two weeks. Shar, I have to tell you, coffee is not my friend right now, even to this day. I can't get, I, I don't like the taste right now. Every cup of coffee that I've had, it's like horrible. I literally take it and I dump it down the drain.
Oh.
And I'm like, I just, you know when you just want that cup of coffee, sit down and watch TV? Or in the mornings, you wanna just listen to music, like, you know me and my morning, uh, nothing. I have no desire for it.
That sucks.
Yes, it does.
We've got Christine here, and Yvette is here. I said hi to Jean. Missy Epilar Savings is here. Hi, Linda Powers. Hello. Jeanette's here.
Can you drink tea, Donna?
Um, you know what was actually working for me? Hot water. Straight hot water out of the, um, that was all I needed.
With nothing in it?
Nothing in it. It was what's work. Uh, uh, okay. Here's an, we're gonna, we're gonna jump. We're gonna jump. We got so much to talk about. So, a year ago, I had the, the surgery. So, prior to that surgery, they asked me to come off of all my vitamins and supplements, right? And I don't take a daily med. Knock on wood. I'm not, I don't have to. Um, so for a year now, I have not put the oxygen mask on myself. I could have after the surgery, right? And I just never got back into a routine. We talk about routines in our savings and budgeting, but routines within our life are so important. And I used to wake up and take that apple cider vinegar and water and, you know, hot water every morning. And then I was just like, nothing. I didn't do anything for me. And I'm like, so sitting there, um, Steph, I know you had a sore throat. The sore throat was off the charts. It was above 10. If 10 was the highest, it was above it. And it got to the point where it was Tylenol or Motrin, and then, you know, the Dayquil, the NyQuil, nothing, like, nothing else, right? That was the only, um, protocol you had. And I was so tired of taking that, that I had, like, I did get to watch Elf. It took me three days to get through Elf, but it was, the one thing that kept playing in my head was the cotton-headed ninni mugging. And all I kept thinking in my head was the cotton-headed ninni mouth. Like, I felt like my mouth was cotton. Um, and I was going somewhere with that, and there goes the brain fart.
You're talking about Elf.
Yeah, no.
The medicine.
Well, you know what? I know what you're talking about with that cotton mouth, because you feel like no matter what you drink, your throat is completely dry. Is that what it was?
Yes, ma'am. So then, I was looking up alternative sore throat meds, right? All natural. I was looking up everything. One thing that popped out was the, um, uh, peroxide, goggle with peroxide. So I was like, I got nothing else to lose. I started gargling with peroxide, and all of a sudden, the sore throat went away. And then, as I was reading about peroxide, and you know, like, through the years, what peroxide can do and can't do. And it said that it's good for your gums, obviously it helps whiten your teeth, blah, 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 blah. So, since being sick, I have now started a protocol, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna start protocoling so much in my life. Brushing my teeth, and then I literally put peroxide in a small little spray bottle, and I sprayed it on my toothbrush, and I now brush my teeth with peroxide after I brush my teeth, with toothpaste. And I'm done. If there, it's like, those germs have no place in my life right now. I'm done.
I, I was putting, I was talking about this earlier, peppermint oil in my coffee, and that really helped with my congestion. And then, um, you guys were telling me to put, um, what did I put in there? Oh, I, well, I have doTERRA oils, so I was putting Breathe to Go to Sleep, so I could breathe, and that always helps me. And, um, can't remember the other one that Lisa told me to use that I did. But, yeah, I like to use essential oils.
The Thieves. Um, Thieves has a chest rub, and I literally, literally, it was, it's like Vicks, but it was here, and then I put it all over here, like, forget it.
Oh, don't even get me started with Vicks. Oh, I have nightmares of my mom putting that on me when I was a kid. Telling me that, "Hey, at least you're lucky." My grandma used to make her eat it.
What?
Yeah.
I've never heard of that.
Yeah, and she's like, "At least I'm just putting it on you," and she just like slap it on, and I'm like, "Oh, that was so gross." Nightmares.
On set in Chinese medicine, they always advise you to drink warm, hot water to start and end your day. And I think it was clove, um, Steph. I don't, I don't remember if that's the one you're thinking of, but I remember clove being in the conversation.
Um, okay. Some of the comments. Shar wants to talk about the hot.
Kaylee, thank you for joining us again.
Yay, Kaylee.
I hope all is well. My, she, can I tell you, even though Kaylee has not been, um, present, she's always present, if you know what I mean. She was messaging me. It's amazing how many of you messaged me, um, and, and left me comments and emails that I'm just going through. I wanna say thank you. I, uh, you guys really were amazing. Aw. Steph, he loves your nails. Monty loves your nails, Steph.
Monty always loves your nails, Steph.
Yes.
There we go.
Hi, Sandra. Sandra Not Susan is here. Michelle is here. Michelle and Shar are here. And I see Karen. Karen is here. We still had some friends we had to say hi to. I'm trying to make sure I didn't miss anyone. And my comments are disappearing, so Laura's here. Hi, Laura and Marty.
Oh, my gosh. Marty's here too? We got Taylor.
And Marie's here.
Okay.
Marty, you got your box. Did you hear your? Uh-oh.
Me?
Um, is Marty here?
Yes.
I'm curious if she got her, um, gift.
Oh, kind of show.
Okay. You guys ready to get into business? We, because we've got, we've got, we've got my top dogs. I see them in the comment section. And I, I see. So I need you all to stand by. If you're here, please just hear me for five minutes. Since I was down for the count, I told you I was thinking a lot, I actually feel like I went deep, deep, deep into my subconscious. No, no lie, and I speak 99.9% truth. And I, all of a sudden, I didn't even know what day it was, I woke up and I had this, oh, my God moment. And I'm like, I, I, I looked at my phone, and let me tell you, screens were not my friend. TVs, screens, phones, nothing. I couldn't focus. Um, and I realized what day it was. And I was just like, next week, Sunday, is the last day of the month. Donna, you gotta get that December HOP calendar out. I literally made my way from upstairs. I, I, I pulled up my big girl pants again, came into this office, and I put together that HOP. Now, I was delusional, couldn't find my notes. I, literally, today was the first day that I sat in this office. I brought my binders back. I, I did not have my binders for two weeks. I did not look at money. I did not look at anything. I couldn't. So, that HOP calendar forced me into a realization that I need help. Hence the title of this video, which is The Village Council. So, I had lots of thoughts, and on Friday, because we know, Steph, that I had my days backwards when I spoke to you. And you're like, "You're not going live tomorrow. You're going live on Sunday." It's like, yeah, yeah, I know that. So, I said to Steph, and I couldn't, and I'm foggy, and I'll admit it, I'm foggy. I, I'm trying to tune in that dial. So I said to Steph, "Remember when we were in high school, and, you know, you had, you had president, vice president, and you had secretary, and you had..." She's like, "Student council?" And I'm like, "Yeah, yeah, that's it." I said, "We need a council." She's like, "Yes, you need the Village Council." So Steph came up with the name. So we want to put together a Village Council. And I need the Top Gun. When I say I need Top Gun, I need you. You out there, whoever's listening and wants to be a major player in this village. I'm going to start giving opportunity. So, I need you. We need you. I need someone to fall back on in many different areas. I also had this conversation with Lisa, and Lisa, I wish I could bring a fourth person into this, and maybe one day we'll attempt to. But I feel like when I bring somebody else in, we kind of break down, um, internately. But I need a council. We, obviously, we have president, vice president, and so on, so forth. I'm looking for titles, and I'm bringing this to you all. I want you guys to come out with pen and paper and say, "This is what we need." Or, "This is the title I think that you're looking for, Donna," and we're gonna, we're gonna discuss it. So, the thing is this, not every title is gonna get one person. I want each title to have two people. Why? Because I need someone to pick up the slack if the first person can't. Or if one person takes the first week, the second person takes the next week or the next time, and I want you guys to become a team. So, everything's gonna have, so if, say I wasn't feeling well, I'll be like, "Steph, I, I can't do the calendar. Please jump in." But the problem with this one was, I knew Steph was in the same doghouse I was, and I didn't wanna put that on her. So that's why I did, I pulled it together, and I did that. But how, how often is that ever gonna happen, where we're both down for the count? But now, I have Lisa. Lisa also has the availability to get into my program. And I could, I could have Lisa as a third backup for the calendar, so to say. So, I said that the one, right now, the one thing I'm looking for is this, and we'll, we'll open this up to discussion. Sunday nights, Sunday night lives for, forever have been a wealth of information. So many amazing things come from these lives. Why? Because it takes a village. Now, I'm gonna get mushy gushy, right? It takes a village, because when we come up with an idea, you all make it say, "How can we make that better? What can we do?" And you jump in. So, just like we did with the HOP many years ago, this is the third year, right? I want, and all because you volunteer doesn't mean that you get that position. We, we really have to pick and choose who's really going to, Andrew, give me those words, because we were talking about this.
Follow through.
Give it to me, girl. Give it to me.
Follow through. Do what you say you're gonna do. And, uh, back to what you said a few moments ago, Dee, is when we have a couple of people that are maybe, and I saw An put scribe. I saw a couple of you are providing suggestions. Thank you so much. But, you know, Jason's one of those too. Like, Jason's in behind the scenes getting stuff done too. But like, if it say it was Jason and Laura, we're the whatever. Well, they don't all come to Donna when they have a problem. They gotta work it out with each other and just make sure it gets done, you guys. Like, we, we can't all, all 100 or 150, whatever of us can't be coming to Donna and emailing Donna, because then, what does that do to Donna? It overwhelms, and we just, you know, if we, if we're gonna do something, we just gotta be adults, and we gotta make sure that we're all doing our part to take care of the village. Um, so that was a couple of things I just wanted to, to, um, share. And then, ah, there was something else. It'll come back to me.
So, getting back to what happens on Sunday nights is so extremely important, not only to me, but to the village, right? So what I'm looking for is this. I'm looking for someone or people, and it could be two or three, right? To choose, and this one could be three, because it's, I think it's gonna be work. I need you to bullet point the Sunday night lives. So that means you have to be here from the beginning, and you have to be here till the end, and that's a big commitment. And then, I want you to write out bullet points on what happened, what did we discuss? What are we going to then reanalyze? What are we coming back to? What data are we coming back to it? What did we say we were gonna do? When, you know, I, I, I want that, because then I want it to be put into a PDF form so that it will then be free. And then, just like you all have these Donna binders that I've been adding to for years, I think that if we did a live every Sunday, there's 52 Sundays in the, in the year, right? What amazing information is gonna be in that section of your binder? To keep you accountable, to keep you motivated, to, to reflect, to come back to. I'm gonna pause for a second, because I'm, I could be winded on this, because I'm so darn passionate about this. How do you guys feel about that committee first?
And Donna, I'm taking notes on everything you're saying, so we have, uh, so we can remember.
We have a couple more friends, Jane. I'll just say hi to them really quickly. Hi, Kathy James, and Tara K is here. And then, I don't think I said hi to Christine. I saw you out there, and Christine, I know you've done some things for us in the background too. Hi, Beverly. Bev. And let me make sure I didn't miss anyone else. Uh, Billy Rose is here, and I think that was it. I apologize if I missed you. I'm on my phone, and it's very small.
So as I wait for you guys to bring in the comments, I wanna, I wanna give you like an example. So, here we were, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk all things Elster right now. Now, Elster this year was in, for members only. That was a perk to be a member of this channel. We did a gift exchange, and I had, there were four of us that were moderators. And I can't, I can't even say that I moderated anything in that, that thing. So we had Andra, we had Jason, and we had Lisa. And I don't even know if I made you, Steph, a moderator, but I knew when we began Elster that, that good portion of the first couple of weeks, I wasn't gonna be available to moderate. And Andrew was with me, Steph was with me, and Lisa was with me, and you know who jumped into action? Above and beyond was Jason. Jason jumped in, and he, he took it, and he ran with it, and I literally sat back, and I was just like, I was impressed, my friend, and I wanna say thank you. And, and let me tell you, Lisa, Andra, and Jason, just like Andrew was talking about, they kept it away from me. They, they discussed. They handled it. They didn't bring it to me. They, they, they had the full confidence in themselves to know that their command decisions were gonna reflect me, right, Andrew? Was that not what you were talking to me about? Because it's my move, right? And you did, you all did such an amazing job.
And, you know, we talked about when, when we were starting this, this Elster, this particular one. You know, some of our lessons learned from the past is, you know, we're gonna have people that don't follow through. And I, I know I might have seemed like I was being hard, but I really take my friend Donna, and, and if I was doing this for anyone, it would, it would, it would be the same, um, you know, vigor. I would go after this. But we really have to, if we're gonna, if we say we're gonna do something, we have to follow through, and we had someone else that didn't follow through. So we had someone else that didn't get taken care of initially. And again, Jason jumped in and made sure things got handled, so, um, I appreciate him so much for that.
And, and you know what? We understand that life happens. I mean, look at me, two weeks down, life happens. But what's the most important part if life happens? Communication.
We gotta communicate.
If you can't follow through, there were four moderators. There's other people that I know that you could reach out to that can get one of us a message.
Yeah.
Communication in every aspect of your life is so important. But for us, this was also important. Now, I wanna, I, I hope that Shell is still here. Um, Michelle is, is, she sell, she, she sells, she kills me with that.
Say that again faster.
No, uh-uh. No, that's a, that's a, that's a, um, that's a Brady Buns episode where she was, had the little lisp going on, but anyway. Um, Michelle. I've known Michelle for a few years. I actually had the honor to meet Michelle. Now, Michelle has, has not been around, which is fine. She jumped into the Elf, and, and this is not to bash her, just to use her as an example. I know she's gonna know this came from my heart. Michelle came in late, and we didn't shut down Elster. I guess we should have shut it down by a certain date, ladies, right? Is that how? Okay. So Michelle was able to jump in, but there was nobody to pair her with. And this is where Jason gets the kudos, without even thinking or even worrying. He just, he just jumped in and, and sent her a gift. And then, and then she reaches out to me, she says, "I don't have any, anyone to gift to." And here I am, I, I gotta get myself up, and I'm like, I try to focus on this app, and I, I didn't know how to do what they were doing, because I'm looking at a phone versus a computer, and I'm like, I can't pair her with anyone. So I was just like, you know what? I literally screenshotted Jason's information and his gifts that he was requesting, or, you know, asking, or whatever you wanna call it. And she, within minutes, she, she sent me a reply, "It's on the way." And Jason was like, "You didn't have to do that," but I was like, "We know we didn't have to do that," but she wanted to. That's the whole, the whole amazing feeling of not only receiving the gift, but giving a gift. But you see how it took a village, and we didn't wanna leave any man out. And Michelle might have jumped in late, but she was gonna be, she, she's part of us, so we're gonna make it happen. And then she didn't, she didn't just jump in because she wanted a gift. She wanted to give a gift. And that, 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 see, I get emotional. I get, I get so emotional. We are so... We are surrounded by the top gun. And, and I talked about this and someone shut me up. But I want for every single one of us to raise that bar. And I'm not gonna stop saying it and I'm gonna say it louder and prouder each time. So with me telling you that I want you all to figure out how to raise the bar for yourselves. But I'm also asking you, can you raise the bar and be here for the village? Cause we need you.
Yeah, definitely. And you know, it's nice to get other people's ideas on things too. And if you're a part of that council, um, you're in that close knit and you hear all the things going on. It'll be more people giving opinions in a faster manner and, and getting that communication. And again, that means it gives Donna more time to create things because I miss having, uh, some things coming out on a regular basis.
Yeah, the, those perspectives and diversity is exactly what any village needs and certainly ours.
Yeah.
And if I was to sit back and I said, I thought and reflected so much over the last two weeks. When I look back at 2025, I don't know where it went. I feel for myself that it, I blinked and the hop began. And I didn't do the hop once this year and the hop is ending. So where did my, where did my energy and time go? And, and a part of it, that, you know, that it, thousands of molecules to make up a time, right? To make up a moment. I think I put a lot of my effort into Sunday nights. What can I bring to the village? What can we do to better ourselves? What, that, that, phew, that can be exhausting.
Yeah.
And it's selfless. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pat myself on the back for that because I, I try to do for all of you. What do, what can I give to you all?
Yeah, it's just like, I don't, I don't remember how it came about, but because I know I missed a little bit of time with my transition, but like however we came to doing the secret, like, and the magic, like, I know that that renewed a different sense of whatever certain people needed at that particular time. And I, and I'm a firm believer in God, God has no accident, there's no accidents on when things happen and who they happen for. And why we were brought in these, you know, these intersections that we're brought to here on your live. Um, it's just an awesome platform and we wanna keep it that way. Um, hi Symphony, I see Symphonies here and there's a couple more people I saw. But who are they?
Can you, is this, is this facing the right way? Do you see this?
Angela, Trina, and Tricia, and Wanda. Hello, gratitude.
So this was the thank you card that we got from the Travel Legion.
Oh my gosh, I was like, I got that card too. Who'd you get that from? It's killing my brain right now.
Okay, so I actually sat down to open a month's worth of mail this afternoon, literally. So just to give you a perspective, I got to this and I didn't look at the return address when I opened the envelope. And I was just like, the word gratitude just hit me in the face. And I was like, ooh, I like that card. And then I read it a little bit more and I'm like, wishing you a season filled with gratitude. And I'm like, mantra, mantra right there. This is like another full circle for 2025. Sorry. I feel like I have to cough. Um, but I was just like gratitude, thankfulness, the secret, the magic.
Yeah.
It was all to better, better ourselves, excuse me, and to raise that bar. Um, can we talk about the council now? What were some, um, what were some of the titles that you guys came up with?
I can't get back to those comments, but I remember seeing Donna's assistant, number one, two, three, four. I saw like the normal, like treasurer, secretary, whatever.
Donna's assistant, okay.
Yeah.
Um, secretary.
I thought Danny's comment was funny. She said something about, I'm paraphrasing Danny, forgive me, but you said like you're happy to be a viewer, but your managerial days are over. And I appreciate that honesty and transparency because everybody doesn't necessarily want to have a role, but they're right there still supporting the village and we need that too, so.
Right. And I'm, and this is the truth, okay? I'm not asking anyone to step out of your comfort zone. If you've got enough on your plate, I'm not asking you to spread yourself thinner. I want you to come into it, knowing that you're not doing the entire thing by yourself. You will have backup and you will have a support system. Because you know what? Committees. Um, you know, I wanna do Elster in July. I, I wanna do it again in November into December. Like I wanna do those. I wanna do special stuff throughout the year. So I think we need a committee to do that, you know? Um, and I'm looking for suggestions. What do you want to see on a Sunday night? I'm also looking for someone to give me a topic each Sunday night. For a hat, like, I want, I want you guys to come up with topics. I, if you want to, if you wanna do a community post with a questionnaire, I would love to see what your community post would come back as. I would like someone to step up and take that hop calendar. Okay, we're gonna talk hop now for 2026. I want a channel that wants to be, I want two channels, honestly, to be responsible to tell everybody or give them a shout out. Say, um, say Janet the Crafty Saver is going tomorrow. I want everyone to know that Janet's going. And maybe, maybe if you're in the hop as a channel, maybe that's a requirement. Every day you've gotta put out a community post saying who, go, go check out somebody. Because if you did a community post, if we all did one, do you know that that set your algorithm? How awesome would that be? That your posting, I'm posting, Andrew's posting, Steph's posting, all go to Budget and Chaos today. Do you know what that algorithm will look like? Cause people are gonna see it and throw a thumbs up to it. Like, this is what I want. I want, I want everybody to come together and shout one another out.
So I was laughing because you can guess what Shaw wrote, but she's gonna be the keeper of the brick walls. You're frozen on my screen, Donna, so I don't know if you're smiling or if I'm being ridiculous.
No, I'm being, I'm, I'm good. I, I, I think that's funny. She can actually, you know what? She could give me, honestly, Shaw.
It keeps going.
Shaw needs to make the brick walls.
Um, Shaw, can you hear me? If you want to give me, starting now, um, let's make a hundred dollar brick wall a month. And Shaw, you give me the theme for the next 12 months. So you give me a theme now for January. Then in January, you tell me what you wanna see in a brick wall in February. Shaw, do you want that responsibility?
An said scribe committee and I already know that An is an amazing scribe, but you know who else keeps good track of details is Jen. Um, yeah. I'm trying to see what that says.
Wait, I saw, I saw.
I also have. So I've been, I've been jotting them down. I'm on my second page of notes here. Um, scribe committee, project committee, a live secretary, a live committee, cheerleader shout out. Um, requirement for the community post to hop, to the hop channel if you're gonna be one of the people who are doing the hop. Um, secretary treasurer, I don't know what treasurer would do, like we don't handle.
I know, we have to think about that. Um.
Yeah, there's no money.
I think secretary needs to be broken up into several different ones.
Yeah, I agree.
I didn't hear you.
Secretary.
The secretary needs to be broken up into several different, like, types of secretaries.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. Um, okay, thank you. Janet, this was on my list. Now, um, we need people to shout this out in a community post. Um, Laura Bell had a conflict with her date and Janet, um, said that she would switch. Steph, you wanna tell them the dates and the, the switch? Cause I don't have the calendar in front of me.
So I have the calendar, but I need to make sure that mine is the correct one because I looked today and it didn't look different. I have Laura Bell on the fourth.
Right, so Janet, the crafty saver is gonna go on the fourth.
Okay.
And then, um, so cross that out. Janet's gonna be the fourth and then Laura's gonna be on.
The ninth, that would be the ninth, yeah.
So this is what I would love for everyone to do. Community post it everywhere and just tell them because you know it's gonna come. I can't find the hop today. I can't find the hop today. Let's get the word out there. Thank you.
Okay. About date change.
Wait, um, Donna, this is somebody, Nikki, I can definitely post on my channel. Thank you very much, Nick.
Mari and Jack said they can do that too. And then Janet said she can be the hype man for the hop.
The hype man, okay, got you. And like I said, you know, the more of us that hype it every time for the person that's going, how, how do you think that that message is gonna come across? Doesn't it make you wanna join the hop and be, um, someone that wants to, um, do a video? Knowing that you've got this amazing community that's, that's saying, hey, go look at so-and-so. That's what this is all about. It, it might be an old school term of network marketing, but that's not the, that's not the goal. The goal is to come together as that village and, and lift one another up in a networking sort of a way.
Hop hype committee. Monty, I can see you doing that.
She'll make a song too.
Yeah, and you gotta make a, she was talking today about, um, making a village, uh, song.
Yeah.
About the, um, hop.
Okay, so who are the committee chairs? We, we're getting, we're getting input for that we need committee chairs. So who wants to be the committee chairs? What are the committees?
All right, um.
Hop hype committee.
Hang on, I gotta go let Hank out.
Do you see how big we're gonna grow? Do, but just by doing this, by pulling this together, do you see the growth potential for every single one of us? And it, it's not all about the people that have the channels. Like you look at Shaw and she's like, I don't have a channel, but I'm gonna post anyway. So even if you don't have a channel, you can help us. And, and because this is what it comes down to. We have so many, um, community savings that we save together. I know that Andrea and Lisa have something amazing coming out for 2026. You know, Steph has got her stuff coming out. I've got my stuff that we're doing collaboratively, right? It's just like, when you think about what the beginning of January 2026 looks like, not only with the brick wall and the hop, because this hop is gonna be truly, um, this year's hop is gonna blow your mind because it blows my mind, knowing what we've saved collaboratively. Because we kept one another accountable by doing a video each day or each week or whatever, and just staying consistent. It's amazing. It blows my mind. So if you look at what we've done in 24, 25, what do you think 26 is gonna look like?
It's gonna be amazing. It's gonna be epic. Hi Shannon, which playlist are you talking about?
That's it too. We also need someone to be accountable, like to, 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 I'll put the playlists on my channel, but you gotta get the, you gotta get the, the videos into that playlist. I need a playlist person or people.
Well, for which playlist? Cause I've been doing the hot playlist.
Yes, you have. But you know what? Like if we have the hot playlist and then we have maybe, um, uh, what else do we have going on? We're gonna have the 52 week because I don't think Aneesia is here. Um, but Aneesia wants to be accountable for the 52 week. So we're gonna need a playlist for that. And you know, whatever we've got going on, like just say we have, um, we have the upcoming book and we maybe go live on a Thursday night to discuss the chapter of the new book that's coming out. Or, you know, we're gonna talk about this one here in a few minutes. We might have more to playlist.
For sure.
Nothing's off the table.
And you know, any, just, just so that you guys know, any one of you can create playlists and they can be public and they can be collaborative. So it doesn't have to be just us that are creators. It can be any one of you that also can create playlists of, of different things. I don't know if they know that.
Okay. And, and like I said, I want, I need, I need more than one person. I want, I want there to be a team. Team per committee. You're gonna have your chair and then you're gonna have the people that you can reach out to and say, I need A, B, and C for, to get this done.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then I, I have something else in the back of my head. Um, in, I think it was 2025, maybe you could correct me because I'm, I'm melting. Um, Snowgardner had invited me and Steph in the beginning of the year. Am I correct, Steph? Was it this year or last year?
That came out this year, but I'm trying to remember when she invited us to do it. I think it was last year.
Um, I would like to do something like that. And I would like to do that with the village. I want it to be the village book. So I'm taking her concept, but I wanna make it all about the village. So I will have specifics coming to you eventually. But I want us to do that. How do you guys feel about that?
I love it. I think, I think that would be great because it kinda goes with everything you've been doing since you started with trying to incorporate people and helping people and bringing everybody together. Why not do something like this? Cause it totally leads right into it. You do this all the time. You do this all the time. Now we're just putting like a document together.
Exactly, so.
Can I ask what, can I ask what it is? Like what are you guys talking about? I'm not really familiar.
Okay.
Oh, I'll get it.
Okay, you get it. I'm gonna just pause for a second. I'm gonna mute myself. I have to cough. Um.
They left me alone with you guys.
There it is.
So we, we did this collaboration book, um, from Marlene Snowgardner.
Oh, that one, yeah.
And, and so like, here, I'll go to Donna's. Um, so there's mine that I did. Where is she? Where's Donna? It's, it's actually her. So we all had to create a challenge that went in here. There she is, and there's Donna's. And, um, and then all the creators were on the back here.
Now, the thing, that, that was a wonderful collaboration to be a part of. And, but I don't know anyone else that was really a part of that. I, I don't know. And I tried to break bread with them, but I didn't, I didn't feel the reciprocation. So I thought to myself, how can I do something like that for people that show up every Sunday night? How do I, how do I create something amazing for them to be a part of? How do I, how do I create something amazing for them to be a part of? And I was just like, that's what I want to do. I want to do that with us. Because you know what? There's that TV show, This Is Us. It's all about us. It's all about the village. Us coming together. So, yes.
Oh, my gosh, you said this is us, and I just wrote that down, like, we need to incorporate that. See, when you talk, I write down your words and then we end up coming up with something.
And and that's how it began a long, long time ago and I'm not kidding you. I I had, I had the best sleep. I feel like I'm Sleeping Beauty. Like I literally slept and so many amazing things came to me. And I think it came to me knowing that it was to to just create opportunity for everyone. And I hope that you hear that in my tone, in my voice, and you you feel it coming through the screen. I I hope you feel that. I really do.
Yeah, it sounds like people are really interested in that.
Okay, now, Jeanette, is Jeanette still here? Um, Jeanette? I I I, I'm so sorry, but I don't know if you know this, but I called you at nine thirty this morning. Usually that I'm like, I would, I would text somebody saying chat or something, but Jeanette, I actually called you and your phone was ringing, so I hung up. Jeanette, I want to just give Jeanette's journey a shout out. Um, don't forget that the hop begins on Tuesday for the final month of twenty twenty five. Jeanette is kicking us off. And she's kicking us off and after that, it's going to be about Save to Sync. Now, Jeanette? I know that Jeanette went live last night and I only know that because my dear sweet Andrea said that um Jeanette was live and that she did Save to Sync for the first time. Jeanette, can I ask a question? Would would you like, I I want to see if I can bring you in. If I sent you a link, would you want to just jump in and talk about the feeling that you had with Save to Sync with us? I don't know if you're set up or you're ready or you know, your hair might be a mess, so you just, you know what Donna, the kids were the kids were up in my stuff all day. I can't do it. I totally would understand that.
Donna, I can jump out if she can come in. I can jump out and come back if if you need me to.
If 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 it doesn't go well, maybe that would be great, but I'm just kind of curious because from what Andrea told me, it was an amazing experience. I'm just gonna wait for her comment real quick.
It was epic. It was emotional. It was fun. It was exciting. It was awesome. Some of you were there. Some of the people in the comments were there last night with us.
Oh, yeah? I'm gonna go back and watch it. I I have to. But that's why I called her. Um, I called her at nine thirty this morning to talk to her about seeing if she wanted to come on. Not knowing that she had finalized Saved Sync today. I don't have a.
She said yes. She said yes.
You guys talk and let me get her this um link.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm like, yeah, I'm reading.
Want to make sure I'm seeing what they're saying.
Yeah.
I hate when I'm, I would love to watch lives. I I need like it to zap me or something when a live pops up. I'm like, I always find out about him, like was live fifteen minutes ago and I'm like, darn it.
Yeah, I have my notification bell on from their channel, but I also have it on my iPhone to like bring the notification up onto my screen. So as long as I'm looking on my screen, I'll see it or my watch. If I'm not though, I may not see it. I'm sure.
Tell me, you're gonna have to tell me how to do that because I need that.
Yeah, yeah, it's a notification.
I need that too, Steph. When when Andrew gets here, because we were talking about that also. I I cannot, honestly, I don't know why I'm so darn excited. I do know why. I can't wait for her to get on the road and and be here. I already told her that I want her to feel as comfortable as she can be. Uh, the whole desk is ready for her to film if she want a privacy or I will teach her how to use my above camera and edit from the computer.
I'm gonna sneak away and go 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 over for a little bit.
Look, I've watched Donna like this a clip and then it's done. I I don't even know what happened with the magic. Yeah, I don't know. I just, she just click, 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 and it was all done. And I'm like, okay, bada boom bada bing. I have no idea what just happened.
So I know Lisa's still sitting in the comment section and I have to tell you, I had an amazing conversation with her yesterday. And but today, I'm like, oh, I'm like, Andrew's gonna be here. I'm hoping that she stays for New Year's, right? And then I'm like, oh my God, I was like, could I get Lisa up here for New Year's Eve? Could I get Steph and Greg here for New Year's Eve? I'm like, so I have to tell you that I really, really thought about this today and I'm just putting it out into the universe.
Well, well, well. Um, I like what Shar, I wanna, I wanna talk about Shar's comment because I think a lot of villagers may have a similar like she um, it's from a a few minutes ago. It's at, oh dang it. She said something about she doesn't know how to, but I I don't know how to make a page, but don't but don't have a channel and don't know how to, but maybe I could work with someone and make one. So Shar, there's plenty of people here that do know how to do it. And I love how you said you work with someone and and like I said earlier, not everybody running to Donna because there's plenty of other people that the knowledge is spread through in the village that we can get help from. Love it. Oh, nice. Um Heather, yay.
That's him.
Okay, we're um, just waiting on Jeanette when she shows up. She shows up. Um, and Marty, I want to tell you, I got your message today. You must have sent it yesterday. I got it today. Do you guys all feel this way sometimes? Sometimes messages come through and they're spam messages and then the important messages kind of get pushed to the bottom and then all of a sudden you're looking like, I never saw that message come through.
Yep. It happens on my text messages too, or I'll look at a text message and I'm like, oh my God, like I don't respond till the next time I have a uh something to say to that person and I apologize, like, I thought I responded. Shar.
Shar went to New Year's party at Donna's.
I'm sorry, this one would have to be for the for the four of them only. Four of us is a four of us, four of us. And of course, if Laura wanted to come, she's more than welcome. We have, and this, that would be, if if the, and this is how I think of it. If 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 we got together, it wouldn't just be about New Year's Eve or it happening. It would definitely be a mindset meeting. And if if we got together and we were not on vacation and we really could sit around my dining room table.
Yeah.
Not only would I feed you guys my antipasto, but I would supply you with a legal pad and a pen. And I would definitely be pulling stuff out of every one of your brains.
Well, not only that.
You've had me at antipasto.
But look, last year when we were doing that, I would say something and then Donna would be like, do 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 do, and it'd be done. And I'm like, well, okay, again, just the magic happening. So, yeah.
And you know what? When you get here, I am looking forward to those magical moments. Because so many great things came out of last year. And not even last, we we, well, we did, where were we in my backyard for the summer?
Right around July fourth.
That was, that, right, you had went to concert. You went, no, you went to the concert first.
Justin Timberlake.
And then you came here.
And I stayed the night in Harrison, Harrisburg, something with H.
Right. And then we sat in that backyard. She had her laptop going. I had my iPad going. We had our notebooks out. And we, it just came.
Yeah.
So it's it's amazing what comes from it.
Imagine if it was like all of us.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. And there wasn't a vacation involved where, you know, you had to be at this location at that time or that location. And we had the time just sit and and really brainstorm. And I get it, we've had, we've had those meetings, but something about being in each other's presence.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on one second. Ah, she's here.
I'm gonna mute.
Jeanette is knocking.
Hey, hey, everybody. Who you know? I have to put the hair up real quick, like, oh, Donna want me on, I gotta go. So hubby took over. He put the baby to sleep. Thanks. My hair was like this today. It was like all over the place, but you know, we 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 put it up, we put it up.
I was only joking when I said about the hair. I really was, but okay, I guess I was right. So Ms. Jeanette, I want to say thank you. And it's always nice to see me, I I could you hear me all the time, but just see me and know that she checked up on me, my entire sickness. Hey, how you doing? How you, and I heard that New York in that text. How you doing? How you doing today, right? You you were gushing on me, you know, can I do anything for you? You you always, and then what do you always tell me? How how the connection between you and I this year was so meant to happen?
Yes.
And you are a perfect example of commitment. You committed yourself to this village.
Yeah, from day one.
From day one, from day one, and I appreciate you so much for that. Now, you also took my challenge of trying Save to Sync. Because Save to Sync is going to be all we talk about and inspire, just like the ding 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 rocketed, right? Back two years ago, right? That ding 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 came from us as a village. Save to Sync needs to become a household phrase.
Yes, I agree.
With taking my challenge of of trying it for the month of November, can you please tell me your journey?
Okay, so the first thing I had to do was get organized, right? And it had to look cute for me because in order for me to do things, as a lot of people know in my channel, it has to look cute to me in order for it to be inviting for me. So what I did was I made a Save to Sync pouch. Right? The letters are kind of falling off a little bit, but I was like, okay, I need something cute to put these challenges in. First, I had a little box, but I didn't want that because I had a lot of photos in it. So I went on Amazon, got me a pouch, got me some little sticker thingies here and put Save to Sync. So now it looks cute, right? So and then inside of it, I put a tracker. So I put a savings challenge tracker for November and I just wrote that and it's sloppy. I don't write neat when it comes down to like the markers and laminate. But I wrote down all the challenges as they were getting completed, right? Because the challenge was on and I was super excited about it. Because I never really saw how many challenges I save in a month. I usually, okay, challenge done. I gotta um put those into sinking funds this week, right? So I never really added up to see where I was at, right? So I took the challenge for November on the live. He was like, why don't you try it out for November? I was like, alright. Challenge accepted, let's do it, right? So I wrote down all of them. So I completed thirty one challenges, right? And out of the thirty one challenges, there was just one challenge that I reallocated into my business binder, because that's what I had to do, right? So I was able to save, I forgot how much I say I said on the live yesterday, but I think it was about twenty three hundred dollars for the month. Right? And all the monies is in here and it's all like some of it is in pouches. I was like, oh, this feels like, you know, you put the money under the under the mattress. It's like, oh, I got money now. So, and this was, this was done with like a lot of my savings challenges, but saving challenges from people in the community as well. So I was super excited about it. I can't wait to like unstuff it, do the unstuffing actual video and um reallocate that money because I do have a goal for, well, the first thing I need to pay off because my printer went out. So I wanted to buy two printers. I was like, oh no, I can't be down. So Jeanette's journey shop was down for like a whole week and I was losing my mind. I had not, and I was like, that's God telling me to sit down, like sit down for a moment. Take a chill. They're gonna get their orders. You got this, right? So I was like, alright, instead of me ordering one printer, because I bought the same printer that I did have, I was like, let me try out a different printer just in case, one that's a little more modern, right? Boom, six hundred dollars down in the hole. I put it on the credit card. I have to unstuff this and put those six hundred dollars right there, so I'm not in debt. Because I haven't been in debt for a long time. So I was like, the money came in handy, the fact that I saved it all at the end. This situation happened. Now I could boom, throw that six hundred dollars into that, right? And then another goal for the end of the year, um I wanted to do um one thousand dollars for emergency, one thousand dollars for savings, right? Like a savings um envelope. So in both of those envelopes, I have about seven hundred and something dollars. Now I'm able to complete it with this money right here. So I'm like, when I tell you that this works, and this is my first full year doing this, like my first full year doing it and it's only side hustle money. So this just showed me like how hard I did work, right? Um hubby didn't contribute to any of this because yes, hubby does pay the bills. But this money came through on a lot of occasions, I have to say. And um the fact that I have money saved is crazy right now, like fully funded for Christmas. That was like three months ago. I was already fully funded for twenty twenty five. We already saving boom for twenty twenty six, right? Um, back to school. Instead, because you know, when back to school comes, you're like, alright, we need X amount of money. You throw a whole lump sum of money out of nowhere to do back to school. Boom, I handle back to school. Boom, I handle Christmas. When it comes down to the kids' birthdays, it's usually five hundred dollars each kid. Now I can complete this one because Sophie's birthday is in January, so I'm gonna take a little bit of these monies and add it to what I have there, five hundred dollars for um for for birthdays. And I have to say that even hubby, hubby's like, oh, you're gonna start paying some bills around here.
So I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Let me see your board that you wrote on.
Oh, this one right here.
Right.
It's a saving challenge tracker.
That's that's what you, that's every challenge that you saved.
For November.
That that completed, right?
Yes, completed.
Do me a favor. Do me a favor. Take this from me. Get yourself a notebook.
Yes, I need one.
Get yourself a notebook. Take everything that you have written there. Rewrite it in pen and paper, okay?
Yeah.
Put the date, November first to November thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Then I want you to write down every single challenge that was completed. Total it. Then write down where you're allocating it.
Oh, I have a page for that. I was prepared. I was prepared, Donna. So I have where would the money go page as well. So these are all my sinking funds and then where.
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. That's a whiteboard. You're gonna erase that eventually.
I'm erasing it, so I know I have to document it into something else. Yeah, so, yep.
Because if you are so hyped with the first month.
Imagine what comes.
Wait a second. You're so hyped with the first month. Wait till the second month and you see that number grow. And then come back in in the third month. And then after the first year, we're gonna come back next November. And we're gonna reflect on what did you wind up saving for the year? And where did you allocate all that money? Because why? It's so important to know not only how much you saved, what got you to that that number, such as the challenges? And where was that money allocated? Because then you are conscious of every penny.
Yep, yep. I'm so excited. So I can't wait to like do this video. I'm excited about even unstuffing my village. Like, that's another big lump sum coming up. And I'm like, maybe I'll surpass the goals that I had for twenty twenty six. I mean, twenty twenty five, leading into twenty twenty six. So I'm excited about unstuffing that. I stuffed it from January to now, so I'm excited about that. I'm just excited.
Okay, so now that you just spoke about the village hop for twenty twenty five and unstuffing, do you want to tell everyone that's listening what the plan is for after the final um?
Okay, so the plan is the last um, the last. Okay, so the plan is the last um the last hot video should be December sixteenth. I want you guys to email me or hit me up on IG, I know I I communicate with most of you guys. But if you are doing a reallocating video of your hot money, um just let me know so I can shout you on the post notification and add you to a playlist. And we have, what was the hashtag? It was.
Um I have it, I'm I'm gonna make sure we have it. Wait a second, I'm looking at a different email.
Yeah, I have it on my post, hold on.
The village, it's it's um stand by, everybody. This um.
Let me go on.
I'm gonna go to my sent.
Isn't it post notifications too? Save to Sync Village Hop Twenty Twenty-Five.
Got you, okay, so this is going to be the hashtag that we use. Um Save to Sync Village Hop Twenty Twenty-Five. So if you are doing the reallocation of your hot money, this needs to be in the title of your video, then you need to reach out to either Jeanette or myself. And that is where another playlist will be, we're going to have that playlist on where did the money go? That you just saved, where will you be putting it? Where will it benefit you the most and how exciting will this amount be?
Or even if you, let's say you spent some of that money, where did you spend that money at because it was there? It doesn't have to be all completed, I wanna know like as a village, just showing people, you know what, this money came in handy at this point, I had X amount, took it out cuz I had to go pay a bill or had to do something for the kids or whatever it is. Please don't feel like you have to have all of it completed. Just let us know where that money got real, real, even if you have half it in there or quarter in there, like a quarter of it in there. Where did it go? Where did the other monies go? Because it was there, like, oh, I had an emergency, I had to go get tires or something. This is where that money went, and I'm so glad that I saved it from X amount of time to X amount of time cuz I had that money in there. So it doesn't have to be a full on stuffing.
And this was her idea to bring it to the table, and I love that you did that. And that you weren't like, you weren't like, oh, do I ask Donna, do I don't ask Donna, you just said, let's, you know, what do you think? And I I proposed it to Stephanie and Stephanie's like, yeah, I I love it.
Yeah, cuz we then, like last year when you guys did it.
There was a question, I think it's good to bring this up right now. If people are doing their reallocation videos, do you, it's Emily asks us from the Law Budgets, do you want to use the same thumbnail like we've been using for the hop? And I think we should, just cuz it connects it, and but in the title, you put, how did we reallocate?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Or where did it go or something like that, and then put the hashtag in there.
Yeah, we could do that.
I I love it, I love it, in fact, you know what, Jeanette, you come up with the title of it, and you'd let us all know on video one of December.
Okay. Do you wanna thumbnail, are you, are you gonna do the thumbnail?
We're gonna use the same thumb thumbnail.
The thumbnail, the same thumbnail, okay.
It just completes it, it was the year of savings.
Yeah, because last year you guys just told it all, that's another good idea too, to see how much everybody saved as a village, right? I don't know who was in charge of that one last year, but it'll be better to show people that it really works, this system really works. And um you'll have X amount of money at the end of the year, um if you just keep up with it, you know, like even with the new, the way we're rolling out next year, even if you're not saving the whole thirty dollars, even if you're saving with quarters, that all counts, you gotta understand that, like I did um Judy's, I did Judy's um Saturday Night Live, right? I unstuffed that one last night, and I started with the five dollars, right? Um every every Saturday night, and I was like, you know, I have to switch it up to a dollar cuz I can't afford the five dollars right now. Cuz I need other money, like my monies to go to other challenges, and I was able to save eighty-four dollars in a year with just that. Just keeping up with it, yeah.
How come you finished that early?
Because I I it was only a dollar in each of them, so I was like, uh I I said in the live, should I just finish it? And then Judy came on, I was like, I just finished your group play, I have it here actually. So I was like, you know what, I was I was up on it like from the beginning, so this is it, it's all complete.
Love it, love it, I that's one of my favorite things to do, I don't get to do it with Judy on her Saturday lives. But I know I do it like on that Saturday or Sunday. I I and that's just it, we got Judy's savings, uh like I said, Andrea and Lisa've got something coming out. We've got the brick walls, we've got the hop, we've got the fifty-two week, Mama Bear's gonna be doing the twenty twenty-six. You know, that I'm jumping in on, so I mean collaboratively, we've got so much as a village to save. And it's okay to 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 change the amount, but still be part of.
You don't have to keep up with it, yeah, exactly, you could still be a part of it with whatever you save, it could be dimes, it could be, if you see it add up at the end and the amount, I did dollars there, the first two months I did the five dollars, but I did dollars there, that was eighty-two dollars. That's eighty-two dollars saved in a year. So I just, I just love that when people have their, like Andrea has her group play too, keeping up with it, she rolls the dice. Um even the one that we save for her retirement, that was a big chunk, that one ninety-one was amazing. Amazing, I'm like, I can't believe I have one ninety-one, I think that was the first challenge that I had a lot in. And then she re she redid the other one, so saving as a group actually hypes you up like, alright, um I'm I'ma save with the group, I have my group play on Saturdays that I try to keep it really low because I know a lot of people can't put up like the money sometimes for it, so I try to keep the numbers low, right? But it just shows at the end like how much you actually saving at the end. And if you have to pull the money out midway, you gotta do what you gotta do, that's it, that's it.
Very nice. I love it, and and you know what, but by by doing group play with each channel, of your choice, obviously.
Yep.
It really is the word accountability. Now, today is the first
True.
Live, right? Well, prior to December, does everybody have their words ready? Or will we be announcing our words next week?
It's next week, I looked at that, I looked at that, it's next week.
Alright, so reminder that next Sunday, you have to have your word for twenty twenty-six. Are you you guys up for that challenge? I wanna yes in the comment section, yes, if you are ready.
But I gotta think.
And listen, if you can't, if you don't wanna use just one word and there's two words that work with you or even three, run with them.
Yeah.
Cuz I think that accountability is is following over.
Everybody's saying yes, so.
I love it.
So stay tuned for the video where I'm gonna put all these monies, let's see what happens if I reach goals for twenty, my end goals for twenty twenty-five. I think I am, but there's other things, like I do wanna take some of this money out because there's a lot of people I wanna give Christmas gifts to in the villa, I made a Christmas list today of everybody I wanna give something to in the community. And I'm like, okay, I gotta do a little twenty-five dollars here, a little twenty-five dollars there, like so I could spread it out. But I just wanna say like you guys mean a lot to me, and I wish, I wish I could sit there and give so much to the community, but I could do bust so much, I mean, we got an iPad for a giveaway, so, and that's all cuz of you guys. So I I can't wait for that too, yeah.
I love it, I love it. Andrea, can I, can I, can I tell you how much I love the fact that Jeanette uses the term monies?
I use it now too, it's monies now. It's a real word, I was like, well, we're gonna say money plural is monies. And we call it lessons and monies to all of us and abundance, so I'm with it now. Um Jeanette is, I am so proud of you because you know, we connected a long while back um via Cass CJ and a different collab that we did. And watching your evolution of like, you know, where you started, you were doing, um I'm saving for six months of expenses and and you know, I'd watch you and I'm like, uh, okay, I wonder how it's gonna go. And you know, rooting you on all the way, but watching you like, as you were, you were allocating your monies right away, you funded like the school supplies, like no problem, like I think it was two thousand, no problem, piece of cake. And then you've done steadily, you've been doing different things. You funded a couple of your six months ahead, well, not the whole six months, but you you were funding a couple of this, I know you were doing the smaller ones first, like.
Electricity and um I'm almost done with like two months of like the internet. And the main thing is the mortgage, the principal payment for a mortgage. The big one for twenty twenty-six cuz our mortgage went up, but hubby's like, you saving for principal payments, wait a minute.
You also had a kitchen fire incident.
I funded it with home repair, yep. Still is still good, so it's just like, if he doesn't have to take the money out, I have it here, and he's learning that slowly too, like cuz my husband does not, he's like, no, I got this. I got everything, and I was like, I got a little bit of monies here, you know, I work a little hard for this, he's like, okay, I go. Just give it to me, just give it to me, he's learning now, he's learning now. I was like, oh, I'm fully funded for Christmas, so what we doing for the kids? And he's like, what?
You did a big goal for all the kids, like I think.
Yeah, and Jaylene's money is depleted cuz she needed something for this and needed something for that, and then I'm like, alright, now I need an extra monies for her so I can buy her gifts because she's doing adult stuff, so I got you, you need help with something, I got you, cuz when it comes down to her, she's an adult, but if she needs me for anything, I'm gonna give her the money for what it what she needs it for, so now I'm gonna save up for her present, you know, like her present for Christmas. And she's like, she's an adult, but she's still a baby to me, like she gets the Easter basket still and all that. And I think it will just always be that way, and that's my first one, so.
Of course, but I I just wanted to say kudos to you, I've been watching your journey and it's amazing to watch, and it just, you know, cheer you on over here.
Yeah, and I'm excited for twenty twenty-six from the car. And I wanna say thank you to Andrea cuz she was the one who put me on to Donna, I was like, oh, I like this village style, I wanna save with the village. Wait a minute, and I started the village, I think the third week of January, and I was like, I was like, Andrea, I wanna be a host, like I wanna do the numbers, I wanna run the numbers, remember, cuz that's what I was like, yo, let me run the numbers, come on. And then Donna was like, alright, I'll run the numbers. Exactly, I loved it. Yeah, but Andrea put me on and I'm, and our friendship is great too, like we have a lot of things cooking up for twenty twenty-six. You know, like we hit each other up all the time, like where you at, what you doing? She finally say, um shared the locations with me and I'm here trying to figure it out, like, oh, she over here, she's over here, alright, cool.
She said, where you at? I'm like, let me just share my location.
Yeah, cuz it's always a pop-up, where you at now?
And look, I love, I don't mind, Lisa, I love that, whoever wants to keep an eye, I appreciate it cuz if I'm gonna ditch, call the people for me.
Yes, yes.
I always check Instagram for you, I'm like, where is she, is she okay?
I see that Mama Bear has her brick wall out.
I just don't wanna forget to do it.
Alright, so let me grab my brick wall because I'm pretty sure I'm behind.
I'm behind.
What, what is the amount that we're supposed to have in there?
Let me see the chat.
I have one forty in there already, so are we at one sixty?
I I don't know, I've been sick for two weeks, so um.
Where's Jason, he'll know.
I think we're supposed to, I I I'm pretty sure I'm sixty off, so I think we should have one eighty.
Shar said you need to put last week in, Donna, but you might need two weeks, right?
Jason, well, okay, one sixty, so it's one sixty.
Okay, so I have to put in forty.
I have to put in sixty, I think I have that.
Okay, hold on. Ten, twenty, thirty, forty. I have twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred, and twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. Wait, tonight's one eighty?
No, one sixty.
Several people are saying one eighty, so.
I thought it was one eighty.
Oh, damn.
Oh, it's one eighty?
I think it's one eighty, alright, and I have that twenty sitting right here.
Alright.
I'm gonna get an.
Six, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, alright, one eighty. Excuse me, I am um not coloring cuz I'm not pulling that out. But I I will confess that um yesterday, I literally had to take money out of my Christmas binder, so I'm behind obviously on every single challenge, but my twenty twenty-six Christmas binder is empty. Because um you know, when your daughter needs. And
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest that um because of TJ's situation right now, all my extra monies is going to him. And keeping him in with all his bills paid. And I'm gonna actually fill you guys in on where TJ's journey is right now. Because I've kinda kept it a secret, but I think as of last night, it is disclosable. Um so TJ is my oldest and he was a welder by trade. And I didn't even know when, I I can't even my mind on months and things like that. But he left his position. And he uh started school. And he did not come on the cruise because it was the final weeks of his course, which was a certificate course, and I asked for prayers because he was struggling, and I'm gonna ask for prayers again tonight for that young man because he now has to um take a test. And he gets very nervous when he takes a test, and he's gotta get bonded. And he has to um have insurance for his new business venture. By me giving you guys those seeds, what do you think TJ went to school to be? I wanna see if anyone knows, can guess.
Hmm, I don't know.
Oh, nobody's giving me answers.
Taking a guess, nobody's taking a guess.
They're sending prayers.
Okay, we got architect, certificate of welding. Architect, uh realistically.
He was a welder.
Security, police officer, house flipper. These are good guesses.
They are awesome guesses, TJ went to auctioneer school to be an auctioneer. And he actually said to me yesterday when he came to ask for money. And he's kinda getting down on himself because TJ was in abundance. You know, between Willow's Warehouse and having a a full-time job. And then all of a sudden not having a full-time job, back to school, and now giving all your attention to school and not making money. Um he literally, it kills him to have to come and say, ma, I need, and yesterday was eight hundred dollars, and ma, uh can you Venmo me three hundred, ma, can you Venmo me this, and then still having to pay um the mortgage and the building and all of that. So my savings is gonna look differently probably for the month of December. And I don't even care if I empty out every envelope I have and use the HELOC to cover his his bills. Because I have the utmost faith and belief in this young man. And I told him that I believe that there is nothing that he can't do. And that he's not to worry this much about anything financially because he's gonna, it it's gonna come back tenfold. So.
Stress on him, that's like a weight off his shoulder too in the process of all that. And if you could take that little bit of weight out, cuz it's different for men, especially asking. It's very hard, especially. Especially asking, it's very hard, especially if you're the one who had it all together. So, yeah, it'll, he'll, he'll, he'll be okay.
They actually had a clean-out job today cuz the clean-out job business is still there. Um, the garage sale is done for the season. Um, so basically, and he hadn't had time to post, he's an eBay guy. So usually he makes a decent amount of money on eBay. Aside from everything else, this kid, y- you know what, Jeanette, when I think of you, I think of TJ. Because you guys are go-getters, like you're gonna, even Andrea, she's out, like she, she told me what she was covering. Right?
Yeah.
You guys are movers and shakers. So last night we had a gathering at the fire hall. And it was a, an annual um, turkey, ham, pew pew, um, raffle, right? And it's, it's an amazing night. Unfortunately, none of us, we had two tables, none of us won, but we had such amazing memories. And I'll get into that in a second. But I got there early, so I always get my same two tables every year. And I went over to talk to somebody and she says to me, so what kind of auctioning is TJ gonna be doing? And I went, what? She goes, yeah. And now TJ had to um, um, what's it when you work under somebody? Um, shadow. Shadow apprentice, um, an auctioneer. He had to have so many hours under his belt. Before, you know, school ended and before you can take your test and so on and so forth. And there must have been a local auction not far away and everyone saw TJ working.
Yeah.
So it kinda let things out because we didn't, you know, you, you don't need somebody talking, you know, small town, this, that, and the other thing. But anyway, since it's out there, I thought I would take this opportunity tonight to talk to you about what's been going on with TJ and then what does my finances look like? I'm really okay that if I've gotta just pop in and say hi and not have money to save like I was saving, it's all for a good cause.
Yep. I don't know, they just, do you see your kids are still being babies? I don't know. She's older, but if she needs my help, I'm gonna help. But she's, even when she was living here, she helped me so much, so, yeah, it's like, and we grew up together, like I had her very young, so that's like my, we, we basically raised each other if you think about it. So I will always have her back and she'll always have mine. I know that. So.
I love it. I love it. Was there anything else on our agenda that we were gonna talk about, ladies?
Well, I don't think, for me, no.
The only other thing I saw was hop twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, the hop for twenty twenty-six, just to kind of do a recap on what it's gonna look like and when it's starting.
Okay, let's do that.
To feel good again. I might have to get going pretty soon. I'm not feeling too good.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta go. She got out the bath. I gotta go get her dressed.
Alright, go ahead, go, Jeanette. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Andrea. Bye. Bye.
Bye.
Okay, um, getting back to it.
I have my notes right here.
God, I love your notes. Tell me what your notes say.
So we're gonna be doing, uh, the twenty twenty-six hop is Monday through Friday, five days a week. We're doing six dollars a day, so it's still gonna be thirty dollars a week. Um, but it's gonna be one book. So it's just gonna be one book. We're not doing the other two books anymore. Um, five days a week so we can open it up to more people to be a part of the hop. Um, we will be doing um, six envelopes. And so number one is gonna be prosperity, two is give generously, three is abundance, four is month ahead, five is secret stash, and six is travel. And it's gonna kick off on January fifth, which is a Monday, cuz we're doing it Monday through Friday. And we'll still have hop calendars, um, we'll still have prop money. Um, we'll still have envelopes, the envelopes will be new. Um, all of that will be coming um, in December to get ready for January.
There will also be a tracker. Hop calendar is gonna look a little different this year. Um, so we're gonna have tracker, we'll have this. And what my goal is this, I'm going to try to keep things uniformed. Meaning if you start the month, kinda like Mari took the last day of the month, I think I'm gonna try to keep everyone around the same spot each week. Of course, it will be subject to change based on if I'm rotating someone in or if someone can't do it that month. So we're gonna try to keep it around the same timeframe each, each month.
That might help people too, um, for the day of the week. So like if you know that I go every third Tuesday or whatever, I, I know that that day is set for this. And so it makes it consistent and people know, okay, I'm gonna go to Mama Bear on this day cuz that's the day she does typically. You know, that, that'll help, I think, too. I like that.
Now, I will, um, I will take emails on if you are a member, you have to be a member and you have a channel. And you would like to join the hop as a collaborator, you may send me an email saying that you would be interested in. I will have a vetting process from, from our, our people. And you, you will have to um, follow certain criterias. Your camera has to be facing the right direction, down, blah, 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 whatever it is. I don't know what they will be, but we're going to, it's gotta stay some form of uniform. Kinda like when you went to school, you had a dress code. We're just gonna have a code of some sort. Don't have all those informations, but it's going to be open to members only. And I will give people an opportunity. But you gotta bring your A game. Gotta bring your A game and then you know what? You get invited back. Uh, it, it kinda brings this to my mind. And we've gotta have standards. We gotta raise that bar. Years and years ago, when we had an indoor pool, an indoor, in-ground pool in our old house. And I invited the neighbor over. And the rule was, if there's no adult in the fenced-in area, your kid's not allowed in it. Well, I broke my own rule because the mother kept saying, oh, she'll be fine, she'll be fine. Just let her in there, let her in there. And I did. And I turned my back for a second and the kid went onto once, the kid went onto twice, and I had to pull the kid out. And that was it. You broke my rules. And you, you know what? Never again did I speak to her and never again was she invited into my backyard. So, not looking to be harsh like that. I'm just saying I want you guys to, to polish up. Polish yourselves up, polish your video up. Um, bring something amazing. And if you bring yourself, bring something amazing, it might just snowball into greatness all over the place. Guys, wanna add to that? Did I say it good enough today?
You said it awesome. I just, I, I did hear, uh, I don't remember what live I was on, but someone said, and this came up before anyway, so it's not like it was new, but someone just was concerned with trying to keep up with, cuz it's a lot more videos, but we've already agreed that the videos were gonna be more streamlined. And we're not gonna do a redundant explanation every single time. There'll be a good explanation and then new people are just gonna have to go back to that video. We're gonna keep it moving.
Thinking, for the explanation, maybe do like the Monday person is the explanation person. And that way the whole week is covered.
Yeah, it, but it can't be all of us. Yeah, it was, it was too much.
And yes, you may recommend somebody. I mean, we already have, um, Mari has been brought to people. Um, that one I know, Steph's on a budget will be joining us this year. I'm very excited about that. She joined us in a financial goals hop. And I'm looking forward to um, breaking bread with her even more. Um, I, I would love to hear from you all if you have anyone that you would like to bring in. I want to give you guys opportunities, but just remember, I need you guys to, to bring your A game. Like I, I want you guys to be the best you can be. Not for myself, but for, for every, everyone and everything in your life.
Yeah, Michelle, that's what I was thinking of. If you do a, a, a explanation video at the start, then that's the one we refer to if someone wants to start. But whichever way, it won't be all of us constantly explaining every single thing. So it'll be more streamlined.
Laura, I hear you. I see you. And I will never give you a Monday.
I'm always impressed that Laura films her videos at her lunch break. Like, that is so impressive.
We already knew that, Laura.
I, I, I hear, right, Laura had caps at me. Uh, Laura, go ahead, I see you. And that, and that's great. I, I love that and I need that feedback. Um, I don't think we're gonna do Disney. Um, I, I don't think we're gonna have Disney in the hop. Um, not everyone loves Disney. And because this is a non-choice, um, like you don't buy it, it's, it's given, the envelopes, I need it to stay generic.
Yeah.
So that if it's everybody's um, rhythm.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no Disney on the hop.
It's Travis, that's a travesty if you don't like.
I agree. I agree. That's how you did it for the workspace. Nice.
I see you, Karen.
Well, the recap always comes on the last day of the month. And Mari, who is budget and chaos, really does a great closing of the month. So that right there is our recap.
And she does it with a bang. She's awesome at the end of the month.
And, and we've, we've praised her many a times because she has saved both you and me, Steph. Numerous times. Yes. Um, anything else I need to see that I'm not seeing?
No, I think everybody is all, every, everybody's good with it. They like the idea of not explaining it every video. Um.
Alright, Lisa wants Mondays. Oh, okay, Lisa, you can have Mondays. We got you. Um. Alright, with that being said, I think, I think we did an amazing night. We had an amazing night. What do you all think?
Yes. It was fun listening to everybody cuz I'm, I'm a note taker, so I've got my four pages of notes of what everybody said.
Alright, so let's just throw out just a few questions.
For letting me on here again.
To, to recap really quick. So I'm gonna ask them a couple of yes or no questions. How do you feel about having a PDF given to you after the Sunday Night Lives? Do you like that idea? Yes or no?
I see a yes. I see one. And it's okay to say no if you don't want one.
That's, that's a hundred percent.
Yes, yes, yes.
That Donna binder up, right? Okay.
Everybody's in for it. Wendy's neutral. But everybody, um, so you know what? That's what's good about that is you don't have to have it. But it's another tool if you want it. And um, cuz sometimes like I know I'll watch the re- the recap a lot. And I'll be like, oh, I should write that down. And I don't have my notebook near me, so it's kinda nice that we'll have that.
And I, I hear the neutral part. I hear you. But you know what? I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw this at the neutrals, right? Just to, to plant that seed, maybe, maybe make that light bulb a little bit brighter. With everything that gets said, there's no way I can remember it. There's no way that Mama Bear will remember it or Andrea.
Andrea, I don't know. She remembers a lot.
I, I try to. I take notes.
But don't you want the ability to say, oh my gosh, Donna and the, the group said something that was so amazed? What was that? Do you really wanna go back and watch the video? Or do you want to have the tools that might make that moment in your life? I'm not saying that what we say is gonna be that whoa, but I really do believe that we say some freaking amazing crap here on this Sunday night.
Well, even if it's reading comments from the villagers and they're making amazing comments.
Yeah, cuz I know, um, that's one benefit of watching a replay is that you can also watch those comments come through and kind of see how people are responding to things. And then Emily brought up a good point. She said that, um, like it's the time of night, she can't take notes. Or some people might be driving in the car, listening, or you know, somewhere else where they can't, so it'll be nice to have that.
And, and let me tell you something. You don't want it, you don't have to take it. But I, I could see from the comments that you believe that this might be a tool that will come in handy throughout the year. It's like the gift that keeps on giving.
Yeah.
All year long, Clark. I had to say it. We're still gonna do a ding 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 for the hop too. That, that folder will still be in there.
Oh, I agree with you. I love that. Yes, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Um, so with that being said, are you looking forward to the hop? Are you looking forward to December? Um, like, how are you guys feeling? Like if you're feel, how are you feeling one to ten right now? One being eh, ten being, oh yeah. I wanna see numbers. I wanna leave with, I wanna see you guys feeling what I'm feeling right now. One to ten, give me a one to ten. Love it. Eight point seven five.
You know what I'm excited about? I'm excited about, this was my first year of saving everything the whole year long. I'm excited to finally be able to take this out and see how exciting that is cuz if anybody knows me, this is hard to keep this in here for a whole year. I, I have like ADHD when it comes to that. I need to get it. So I'm so proud that I was able to keep it all in here.
Your safe-to-sink video on that. I'm looking forward to it.
I'm excited for that.
Because I believe that the emotions are gonna run away with you.
And then Hank is excited for this one, the fur baby.
Wait, you have a cat too?
Uh, it's gonna go to him probably.
Favoritism at best.
Yeah, the hubby spoils the kitties.
Alright, with that being said, I would like to say goodnight and thank you everyone for joining me tonight. I love yous.
Love you back. Love you, Steph.
Love you guys. Andrea, stay safe, please.
Yes, ma'am.
You three don't go to no, don't go nowhere. Goodnight, everyone. We love you.
Night. We love you. Double love ya.
Bye.